Budget meeting for the 2018 Revenue Fund Budget. Very informal meeting. Tonight's agenda, the first presentation that we have is Committees of Council. And we'll start with the Museum Committee on page 100. And we have the Heritage Committee here with us, page 99. Welcome.
Good evening. So my name is Melissa Dunham. I am the Chair of the Woodstock Heritage Advisory Committee. And I would like to thank the other, a few other members of the committee for coming and showing their support. So I have come to tell you a little bit about the committee and why we are asking for $10,000 to help us update the heritage inventory. It is the goal of the Heritage Advisory Committee to help council protect Woodstock's heritage, while at the same time educating the public about Woodstock's rich history. As part of protecting our heritage, the committee maintains a heritage inventory, which is made available to the public on the City of Woodstock's website. The inventory is a list of both designated and non-designated buildings and landscapes that have cultural heritage significance to the community of Woodstock. Creating an inventory is the first step towards creating a heritage registry, which would provide further protection to the heritage buildings. As such, Woodstock's Heritage Inventory is a vital element in the cataloging and documenting of Woodstock's heritage buildings. The Heritage Advisory Committee is requesting $10,000 to hire a heritage specialist to help evaluate and update the inventory to ensure that it meets the current Heritage Act standards. In 2014, the committee was granted $9,000 by the committee, or by the council, to begin the process of creating a heritage inventory. With these funds, we were able to hire an individual to create our current inventory with over 4,000 properties listed. We would now like to update the current inventory to include more information regarding site specifications, building design elements, and historic background in order to meet the 2005 Heritage Act standards. We would also like to expand the inventory to include a larger geographical area within the city. Similar projects are currently being undertaken by the City of Stratford and the City of Branford. And in the end, we hope to expand Woodstock's Heritage Inventory to hopefully someday be a heritage registry comparable to the cities of, of those of the cities of Guelph, Hamilton, London, and Cambridge. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. We look forward to hearing the council's decision. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunham. Questions of council? Counselor Lauter.
Thank you for the presentation. And my question is, do you notify the people that you are interested in designating their homes for...
Yes, if it's going to go to designation, then yes, we would notify them. That is part of the designation process. To be clear, this is for the inventory. So it's just, it doesn't provide any protection for the buildings. It's just more of a document, a catalogue, if you would.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions of council? Seeing none, thank you very much. And next up, we have Len Magier with the Small Business Enterprise Centre. And we're on pages 81 to 83.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to talk now mostly about the Enterprise Centre, but there's a couple of items that should, that council should be aware of in terms of additions to, to base budget specifically from our department. So council will recall at the last council meeting, there was a report regarding the downtown where we basically have asked for $100,000 for council consideration to do a downtown strategy, to come up with a number of programs, projects that we think can be done in the short term. We have a number of studies already done, but it's basically a matter of putting them together, identifying some areas where there are some gaps, and bringing forward some recommendations of things that municipality can implement in the short term that should have a very positive impact on the downtown. So that's one specific item. And then the second specific item actually relates to the Enterprise Centre. So we've gone through the process, we've looked at the positions of the individuals who are working at the centre. And basically, what we're proposing is that the one individual move from a position that we saw originally as kind of more a receptionist administrative position into something that's an advisor. So that would have an impact on salary and also on Ulmer's as well. So those are the two kind of additions to, to, to base budget that council should be aware of in terms of our specific department. I'll, I'll deal with the, the enterprise part as part of this presentation, but if there are other questions regarding downtown, I'm certainly happy to take them. So there you have the three smiling faces from the Enterprise Centre staff. And unfortunately, Rhonda, who's the manager, could not be here this evening. She's actually in a play. And if she was one of the junior characters, she might be here, but she's actually the lead. So she decided that she better be there since it's opening week. In terms of economic impact, you can see from the slide that they were involved with 53 business startups, that they assisted in one form or another, seven business expansions. And based on their calculations, about 78 jobs created. In the blue, it looks at 385 in-depth consultations. So this is anybody who comes into the centre or has contact with the centre who has an interest in starting a small business. And the staff there work with them to look at business plan, doing research, helping them with any kind of licensing, that sort of thing. So a very involved centre, and hence, that's the request to make the one change specifically for the one position, because it's become much more of an advisor role. In terms of 2017, so some pretty major achievements in terms of the facility on Dundas Street. Summer company, council may recall that originally there was a prospect that we weren't going to get funding, any funding from the province for a summer company. And the manager was able to twist some arms and actually get some funding for seven local students to, to look at taking their concept into a small business. So very entrepreneurial in nature, and so often these students will come back and start their own business later on. But significant achievement for, for the centre, obviously. Originally looking at the potential of having no summer students and then getting up to seven. So very happy about that. In terms of starter company, 36 people attended the training sessions that they've had. Three businesses received a $5,000 grant. So there's a whole process they have to go through in terms of developing a business plan, looking at financing, everything else before they get the $5,000 grant. And then six business, businesses were started and one expanded. And then, of course, we have a mentor program as well. So we have 12 volunteer business leaders in the community, and they will work with clients, coach clients, because the mentors have maybe perhaps a certain expertise, perhaps in marketing, or the finance side maybe a little stronger than some of the staff at the centre, and are able to help people who are looking at starting a business. So we rely on them, it's entirely volunteer, and we're very happy that the mentors are pleased to do that. In terms of other achievements, last year was the first regional bridges event. And so this is a major event that they held in the Elmhurst, actually, in Ingersoll. And they had 150 attendees, but you can see on the white board there, the number of people who sponsored. So they had a number of community sponsors, they also had some private sector sponsors as well, which helps, helps offset the cost. So this was the first major event for ASBAC under the new leadership. In terms of other achievements, they put on a number of seminars aimed at helping people to start small businesses. So they have the Networking Breakfast, which is a very regular program. They have the Ask an Expert. And then the two on the left, the Facebook one and the trade show marketing, were basically a pay-as-you-play. Not a, not a huge amount of money, but a nominal amount of money. Again, realising that many of these people are starting businesses, so cash is very crucial to them. 2018, probably the biggest thing that they're spending a lot of time at the current moment is the International Women's Day event, which is coming up. In fact, I understand it's, is sold out, so they're very happy about that. In terms of Oxford County, the reason that the logo's there is the manager approached the county and was able to secure $40,000 in funding for the centre's operations in 2018. Nuts and Bolts is a series of seminars they're putting on, very specific, again, to small business, micro businesses who might be thinking of starting. Typically, it involves one specific element of starting a business. So it might be marketing, it might be forecasting, it might be knowing your customer, that sort of thing. So they're putting on more and more events in the area. In terms of changes to the operating budget, as I mentioned, the main, the first one is the $40,000, which is the money they're receiving from the county for 2018. So very excited about that. And this is somewhat similar to what happens in other areas where there are enterprise centres in the province, that the local municipality quite often is, is a partner, as is the upper tier. So this was the first ask, and as I say, we're quite pleased that the county came forward with $40,000 towards that. In terms of Rhonda's presentation to the county, it was pretty evident that the businesses that they fund quite often are not necessarily just in Woodstock. So there are businesses that they provide assistance to that are in Ingersoll, Brownsville, all throughout the county. So I think that was really the, the impetus to get the county to say that, hey, this is helping everybody, we should put some dollars in, into the program. So again, very excited, and it opens up another number of opportunities for us in 2018. In terms of the provincial funding, provincial funding is interesting because it changes very much year to year. And because we're dealing with the province, their funding calendar year, of course, runs from March to April, so that quite often causes us some challenges on our budgeting because we're calendar year. And, but anyways, we seem to, seem to manage. So we've, receiving a $41,000 increase, provincial funding specifically for those programs. And then in terms of other provincial funding, you can see there's about a $52,000 increase in the next column as well. In terms of other parts of the operating budget, a decline in provincial starter company funding. So what happens is programs quite often are cycled in, cycled out, so you lose dollars in one, one area of programming only to pick dollars up in another area of programming. And that's largely what's happening here. Terms of partner dollars, looking at a slight increase. I know the staff there is very good in terms of developing partnerships and getting sponsorships for the various events. And I know that they will continue to do that again this year. And then the bottom line there is various special events that they put on, so they're looking at a, a bit of an increase there as well. In terms of the, the salaries, so that's the first line, 101. Basically, we did a job evaluation for the position, and it was resulting in an increase. So that's largely the, the impact, the financial impact of that JE evaluation. And so putting the budget up to 127. And of course, as part of it, the next line, the 0150, also means there's opportunities for Ulmer's as well, so will have some impact on the Ulmer's line. So that's part of our own internal policies, those increases in relation to what's, what's going on with the staff. And then you have an increase in part-time contract business advisor of $12,000. And also, in the next line, also the, the business advisor. So the business advisor provides business advice in various different areas. So he may provide advice in a starter company, he may provide advice to student program as well. So paying, paying for him out of the overall program, but it's split between a couple of different, different accounts. In terms of 2017, you can kind of see where our funding comes from. So the province by far is our largest funder in 2017. City of Woodstock is significant funder as well, event sponsorship, and then other services. And then what you'll see on the next slide, 2018, you'll see a significant increase in the operating budget for 2018. But what you also see is a significant increase in the dollars that the province of Ontario is giving us, and the City of Woodstock, the, the dollars are actually going up, but the percentage is staying about the same. We're about 22% of the overall budget of the, of operating the centre. And then the sponsorship is expected to go up. So that's my presentation on the Enterprise Centre.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So next is the museum. We have Karen Houston with us, and we're at page 67. Welcome.
Okay, I think this is me. All right. So for the operating budget for this year, start with the good news. Last year was Canada's 150th anniversary, and it certainly reflected in the number of people who were coming through the museum. So typically, we have about 60% of the population that is coming in, just straight visitors looking to see what's in the museum. This year, it went up to 64. That's roughly 17,000 people just to come in to see the Canada 150 exhibit, other exhibits that were in the museum. It also helped that we had the cow t-shirts, the Canada cow t-shirts, red and white, lots of people coming in just for the gift store. The difference with this is events. Typically, we would have put those in with visitation. However, now that we're doing the fundraisers, whether it is the haunted house or the escape rooms, we wanted to separate that out because there's an actual revenue line that's with that as well. But it also includes things like Family Day that we just had, and all of those good things. Education, the portion has gone down, the numbers have not. So we're looking at basically 26 and a half thousand people coming through the museum. So this is their pie chart, looking at revenue. What's interesting is if you look at the brown, the yellow, and the red, these are the actual grants that come into the museum, so we're talking from the province and the feds. So we'll start with the operating grant. This is roughly about 25%, or pardon me, yeah, about 25% of our revenue. So about $31,000. But I think that people sometimes forget that that actually ties directly to what we spend. So anywhere you see in the budget that talks about our exhibits, education, or collection, it pretty much matches up with that $31,000. So it's like the province is actually paying for the things that the museum does that is museum-related, and that's why they give us that annual grant every year. So at $31,000. Then you have this, this is actually the project grant. So last year, that was the Canada 150 grant that we got from the New Horizon Seniors Grant from the federal government. So that paid for the publication and the exhibit that we had, also those big banners that you would have seen on the side of the Dairy Capital. So that was $25,000. So basically, that's for things that we don't have money for in our regular budget coming from the province, but we want to do something museum-related over and above. So that's where you look for the project grants to do. Then lastly is the red. This is for our summer students. That was about $12,000 last year. And so that pays for half of any of the staff that we have in the summer, doing a lot of the programming and things that come into this lovely bluie-purple area here, which is our earned revenue. Again, that's about 25%. And that's about $31,000. So that pays for any advertising we do, and pretty much any of the administration. So if we buy paper, we go and mileage somewhere, that's paid for, roughly, it works out to about $30,000 every year. So we're paying for it from what we actually make. Which brings in the new areas. We made quite a bit of money off of the gift store, about three times what we normally make, as well as events, now that we did two escape rooms and the haunted house. So this is now paying probably the other half of our part-time. So people who are actually doing programs, we're getting the revenue in to actually look after that. And that's how, basically, it's only the full-time staff and the building that the city is, is responsible for, or comes into the actual budget. So this is a breakdown, again, lovely t-shirts I was just talking about, very popular, sold out twice, we did a rerun. And then the different areas. So again, I'd like to thank the federal government for the New Horizon Seniors Grant, that was a hit. Looking at our different areas of responsibilities, 224 artifacts came into the collection. This is our storage area. Of those, we have about 25,000 in the collection. In 2017, 343 of them actually were on display. And 43 of them were actually travelling across the county because we have an exhibit that's going to all of the different museums. So this is the exhibit here. This is for Oxford, remember, Oxford own. So this is the World War I series that we've been doing, and every year, the museum creates an exhibit. This year, it was focused on Vimy Ridge and the people who died. So we had, where honour leads, we follow. And the attendance, which is right down here, that is not reflected in our attendance figures. This is where, when they were going to other venues across, across the county, who actually saw our exhibit. Then, in the museum itself, we had wonderful, I would like to thank the Rotary Club, Woodstock Rotary Club, where they were highlighting the 100th anniversary of their foundation. And it was really wonderful seeing some of the objects that they have collected over the years. Also like to thank the Oxford Historical Society, they were our partner with the Quizzical History, Canada 150 exhibit, and the publication. And lastly, the Sir Arthur Currie exhibit that we had for Remembrance Day. Now Carrie wanted me to make sure you guys saw the lovely Dairy Days, was very important to her. This is the new shirt that we have, this is this year's shirt. It says, "Woodstock, Ontario, utterly awesome." She wore it the entire time she was there. Okay, so she's, she's enjoying it. Also, we had created a special Canada 150 summer camp program. We did an extra week of camp for preschools, all of which sold out, so it went very well. Wanted to highlight the two escape rooms and the haunted house. This is, oh darn, you can hardly see them. This is Stages, this is the youth company from Theatre Woodstock. And there was almost 40 of them there that were actually participating, fabulous makeup and everything else. They're super excited to do it again. And they want to do part of it in front of the museum as well, to draw more people in. You also have knit in public. These ladies are actually creating the sweater that the cow wore when we had Pavlo in the park. And you can see the wonderful banners that are on the tea house as well, and of course, winter lights. So these are some of the things with the events, we made just over $10,000 last year on them. These are some of the wonderful, different groups that we actually participated with and were fabulous partners for us. Wanted to highlight a couple of things for this coming year. You would have noticed in your capital budget that there was money for the museum, and it was for redesign. So basically, okay, these are conceptual, this is not necessarily how it will end up looking, everyone needs to know this. So we've got the grand hall here, we're looking at coordinating off a portion of it so that we have a larger space for education. It will seat roughly 80 people. When there are people sitting at tables, there will be enough room for two classes. The idea being that increasingly, we're getting buses that want two classes actually in the space. This way, we'll be able to do that. As well, if someone wants to rent the space, use the stage itself and do presentations, they still have that. Part of that is also to be paid for by the Cultural Spaces Grant. Hopefully, I will know by the end of March, beginning of April, if we were successful. That will basically give us money for baffling and lights, because the grand hall is wonderful and beautiful, but it is not well-lit. If you are doing anything there in the night time, you need some other actual lighting. On the downside, or on the downstairs, this is what the museum permanent galleries look like now. Basically, we're going to turn that into what you see here, just moving walls that are not designated. And this will become our temporary exhibit space. The idea being that then you don't have to go up in an elevator, you don't have to carry things up the stairs if you've got a travelling exhibit and it's odd shapes. And that would be much, much easier to deal with. And then this space in the grand hall then becomes where our permanent gallery is. And believe it or not, it's roughly the same size as what we have downstairs now. So that's kind of coming up this year and into next. If we are unsuccessful at getting the cultural spaces, it will simply take a longer period of time for this to occur. Other really fun thing, my museum committee, when they came on board, a big focus was on fundraising and, and doing other activities. So they actually went to Toronto to a urban capers tour, where you actually take people in an urban environment, and you help them find the history of it. And there's many, many different ways that this can happen. So they got really excited and wanted to do this in Woodstock, in about a two-block area, and we're working on that now. I've just, just finished an Ontario Cultural Attraction Fund grant for that, to pay for the marketing for it. And the idea is that, yes, you would start in the museum, but branch out and look at what is in the downtown. We've partnered with a couple of the businesses that were interested to have sponsorship, but also actually engage people in their businesses with tours and other things. So I'm really excited about that for this summer. Just to also let you know, I look after the market centre, so I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Health and safety, we've improved the lighting. Blue Giant is a lift that carried props up onto the stage, and it was getting old and rickety, and we're all really happy it's gone. And then we also have been working with Stages, the youth company, with the haunted house. And over Christmas, we tried something new. On Thursdays, instead of going to the art gallery combined with the museum for programming, we went to the theatre. And so the kids got to learn, what is it, how do you behave, like really little kids, in, in public theatre? How is that different? And what is, what are the proper, you know, rules? And what kind of things happened there? And they had fun while they were doing it. And it was a great success, a lot of teachers want to come back and do it. So it's good, in the sense that you have more usage and actual people in that building as well. All right, talking about additions to base budget, the main thing for the museum was a part-time custodian. So basically, it is with the museum and the art gallery to make a full-time position. It would be 20 hours a week at the art gallery, 15 at the museum. This would be an increase for the museum, right now, we're at 10. There's also the fact that there's really simple, basic maintenance things that art cleaners don't do, like change light bulbs, or, you know, if there's something wrong with one of the stairs, to put some glue on and fix the tread. All of these things, we end up having to do or hire someone to do, so it's, again, added costs. So the idea with, that we would get consistency, and also have somebody, when you needed something fixed, something was going on, that it would consistently happen. That's what I've got. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Shapton?
Thank you, your worship. Through to Karen, just a quick question regarding the grants. Can you just confirm that all of the grants that have been budgeted for in 2018 have been confirmed, that you will receive all of them?
Your worship, through to the question. Yes, these have all been confirmed. So for instance, I was just talking about the Ontario Cultural Attraction Grant, that's not in here, because I do not know that I am getting it.
Just carrying on, your worship, through to Karen. With regards to grants, always something that I'm hesitant about every year, especially with the way that the province is heading right now. With Canada 150 being over, and obviously the increase in traffic and, and sort of that promotion, is there any fear that you're going to see some decreases in traffic? Or do you feel that that's something that you can maintain throughout the next year?
Your worship, through to the question. No, that's a great question. The fact is, is it was a highlight. And so I think that there was a couple of things that it taught us that were useful for us. So the whole thing of where to advertise, how to do it, the fact of having somebody actively in the farmer's market out front, drawing people into the museum, letting them know where we are, letting them come in. All of these things really do make a big impact on, on how many people come through, on them purchasing things, finding out about our programs. So I, I agree. I think that some of the visitation, I don't, I honestly don't think we're going to see quite that high a number again, but by and large, no.
Just carrying on again, first of all, thank you for your honesty, I greatly appreciate it. But I will say, I think this past year in particular, you've done a marvelous job of promoting the museum in different places, in spaces that I frequent and see. And I can tell you that our family's been there, as you know, quite a few times this past year. So congratulations on your success. I do hope that we can find a way to keep that number up, but I understand the 150 was a big thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions of council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next up is Brad Jansen with the Communications and Special Events.
Karen, do you know how to get out of yours and get into mine?
I messed them up, sorry.
Yeah.
What did I do?
It's stuck on page 58 of mine.
There we go. What am I doing? I can't even see it. Oh, there you are. There you go, you should just be able to use...
There you go, you should just be able to use the bar.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Take a few moments of your time to talk about communications and special events for the 20 budget season, starting with marketing. What's on Woodstock Magazine, celebrating its 20th year, providing Woodstockians the information they need to know about what's happening in their community. We continue to be rated and ranked very good with residents in Woodstock. Our last surveying indicated good to excellent across the board. The nature of its content, people hold on to this publication for two weeks or better, being read by multiple people and constantly referenced. Now, The Wild Magazine continues to provide very cost-effective advertising rates that cater to an all-inclusive clientele. It begins with the internal rate available to the city Woodstock departments and close associates, a reduced rate for non-for-profit, an external rate that is attractive to retailers and local business. And we also offer a free inclusion in the magazine's event calendar, which surveying tells us is the most looked at page in the publication. For the first time in the magazine's 20-year history, which we are celebrating this year, the publication will be delivered directly to mailboxes in Woodstock, 18,893 to be exact. That will begin next month, and this will be through Canada Post. And this will guarantee that the magazine is getting to every home in Woodstock. Unfortunately, because of the sketchy nature by which the Oxford Review was being delivered, we discovered through an informal internal poll that it just wasn't getting to where it was going, so we explored this option because it's important that we get the city's information out, because we do steer the message with the magazine, but also it's added value to our advertisers. And to cover the additional cost of delivery, we've decided to amalgamate the June and July magazine to be designed as a summer activity guide, focusing on the many city-organized events, programs, and activities that occur in the summer months. And additional savings were realized also by creating a permanent accessibility template that won't have to be redesigned each and every month, which I think was costing us about $750 per month. We once again embark on monthly marketing meetings that will lend itself to consistent messaging across the board. These meetings allow us to explore all cross-promotional opportunities so that we are able to present a cohesive communication thread through all city departments. And we continue to seek out advertising opportunities from traditional print, radio, television mediums, as well as ramped up, a ramped up presence on social media and the city website. Speaking of which, alternate advertising mediums, Mr. Jason Dunham continues to lead the charge with regard to the redesign of the city website and ever-evolving social media platforms. We've seen a spike through the past year due to, directly due to Jason's efforts. Protocols continue to be developed and utilized by all city departments on a variety of social mediums, this to assure that it's a clear and concise message being provided to maximize communications with the public. And to that, software development and interface design for public-facing communication platforms, including the city of Woodstock website, Sports Wall of Fame, and city services interactive display. We have the development of a document accessibility tool with an eye to meeting Woodstock's goal of full document accessibility in 2021. And I believe that we are significantly in front of that curve as we continue to work on our efforts in that regard. Expansion of Woodstock's social media presence to include additional platforms and content types, the development of software solutions to allow for the continued expansion of public-facing assembly payment forms such as dog tags, parking tickets. And for the first time, online Woodstock Day at the Roger Centre tickets are available, and it seems to be working very, very well. So far, we've sold, I believe, about 325 tickets at the box office, at the Woodstock and District Developmental Services, not Developmental Services, Complex, and over 300, a little better than 300 online purchases. These are the special events that we had organized with great success in the past year. The Easter egg hunt, I'll just go through these events happening this year. We moved the venue, this is the third year that we, third or fourth third, I believe, that we've orchestrated the Easter egg hunt, and we bring in partners, volunteers, sponsorships, and so on. And it's traditionally been on the inside of the track of the fairgrounds. But this year, we decided to move it to Victoria Park because it's such a wonderful park to work in, easily accessible, it's in the core, we'll be talking to the BIA, well, maybe jumping on board with this event, but it's very popular. And the fact that we moved it was there was just a lot of activity on Saturdays, as you're well aware, at the fairgrounds. Arbor Day, Chris Kern from Parks just told me moments ago that Huron Park will be the designated school this year, the last Friday of April, to celebrate Arbor Day. Woodstock Day at the Roger Centre, which I had alluded to, last year we set a record, despite the fact that the Blue Jays continue to raise prices, we sent down 1,650 people last year, and it was simply an outstanding day. And as mentioned, we're over 700 tickets to this point with about five more weeks to go. Victoria Day Weekend and Parades, 71st celebration this year. Last year, we reached out to Woodstock Minor Ball, and they had a bit of a minor ball tournament on the East-West Diamond, and it was kind of a pilot project for them because they changed dates of their traditional tournament. They hope to increase the numbers this year, I believe they changed divisions, so we'll be working closely with Ron Burns and Woodstock Minor Ball to hopefully attract more people down to the park. But the weather cooperated last year and we did very well. Canada Day, part of our Canada 150 celebrations, wonderful day, eight hours of continuous entertainment. And of course, it wrapped up with just another tremendous fireworks display, compliments to the city of Woodstock and its partnership with Toyota. Cowalpilus of 16, we forgot about Cowalpilus of 15 because it was a wash. Colin James was good enough to come back and did not disappoint, outstanding lineup. I don't think I've seen that many people at this event, and we've got another great lineup planned for this year. All the acts for the special events that we'll provide and offer music have already been locked in and lined up, so we're looking forward to another great event of special event, or great season of special events. Pavlo in the Park was our signature Canada 150 event, and once again, we utilize the very underutilized Victoria Park. Gray skies, we had a low ceiling of cloud, rained a couple of little times. We were trying to attract an older demographic, these are all variables by which they determine as to whether they'll attend an event, but we did, I thought we did a great job, anybody that attended really enjoyed it. We had some demographic-friendly entertainment, we had wine and beer in this fenced-off area, we had a nice variety of food, food trucks. And with our partnership with not only the Historical Society and the museum and the art gallery, we partnered with Oxford Creative Connections. And through their efforts, we attracted about a dozen local artists and artisans, and I'm hopefully that we'll double that number this year. City Beautiful Awards, we orchestrated the reception, which came back, we had that at the Southgate Center, and I believe it was very well received. Sports Wall of Fame, we moved the, just by happenstance, we ended up out at Cowan Park, and we needed all that space and more. Golf Hall was double booked, and I believe we had over, well over 400 people in attendance, was a marvelous day, and very well received by not only those visiting and attending, but those that were inducted into the wall this particular year. Remembrance Day, another great ceremony and well-received, numbers keep coming up for that event. Winter Lights, lighting in Museum Square with the assistance of the Parks Department, Museum, Works Department, and so on. It's kind of an in and out, but everybody seems to enjoy it. We provide cookies, hot chocolate, and the like. The unveiling of a brand-new banner this year, which featured an image pretty much taking where that banner sits on the wall at Dairy Capital now. I believe that's Christmas 1947, 1947. So that will be up for the next couple of years, we'll take it down and put it back up. But we'll be featuring other murals on that wall throughout the course of the year. Sister City, Savania Woodstock Dinner, happened after the Woodstock Santa Claus Parade, I believe everybody that visited from Ohio enjoyed themselves. The Christmas Ornament Exchange, no images there, but it continues to be a tremendous, tremendously popular program, and thanks to Ann and all the volunteers and family that come out to help. It's two days of collecting unwanted and gently-used Christmas ornaments, and then on the Saturday, we clear house and they come in and then they go out, and everybody seems to be very happy. CP Holiday Train, this is a program that is somewhat out of our control, but by the addition of proper fencing this year, more volunteers, the train stopped where we were hoping it would stop, attracts thousands, like 2,000 or 3,000 people. And the weather was cold, but it wasn't too cold, and the benefactors, of course, are the Salvation Army. Long Service Award Banquet was a big success, we featured a hypnotist and a ventriloquist this year, we had a lot of fun with that. There was a lot of cell phone pictures taken that night, but none of which I could use. We couldn't get the film developed from the shoes, I guess. Special events for 2018, city Woodstock special events, these are the dates readily available. If you'd like them for your calendar, I'll make sure that we get them to you. The Easter egg hunt, Arbor Day, all the ones that I had mentioned, and this one, because we do the long service awards every other year, this year because it's the last year of the existing council, the mayor's reception, and we'll be working closely with Mayor Birch about putting that event together, and that will be Friday, November 30. Sponsorships in 2017, the solicitation of revenues generated through sponsorships, partnerships, and grants for special events amounted to more than $70,000 and over $80,000 in services in kind. Special events, this is additions to the base budget that we're requesting this year. Last year, we called it Pavlo in the Park, and Pavlo is coming back, but we think that this is an event because of the popularity of it from last year, will be moving forward, and we hope it will be an annual. So the working title for this event this year will be Art in Victoria Park. It was identified that there is a significant appetite for an event of this nature that promotes the arts, culture, heritage, and music collaborative effort, as you can see all the stakeholders that we work closely with to put this event on. And our intention is to build on a very successful inaugural event, that despite being a long weekend last year with sketchy weather. So we moved it to Saturday, July 21st, we think we'll get more favorable weather, and from an organizer's perspective, we'll gain about an hour and a half of daylight, which will help with our teardown. So this year's festival will feature at least twice as many local artists and artisans, walking tours of selected heritage buildings and sites, a variety of foods and wine and craft beer that will be featured in the fenced-off garden area. Entertainment will feature a multinational flavor this year, Brian Bellis has consented to perform as well as emcee once again. Michael Van Hevel, he's a crooner, and he'll be performing along with the 17-piece Jimmy Stahl Orchestra. Mexican songstress, Monique, will be performing, and an eight-piece Ecuadorian ensemble, of which I cannot pronounce. And of course, Pavlo. But the Ecuadorians, they're the ones that perform traditionally right in front of city hall every street fest, and they're fabulous. And so we're going to bring them on board this year as well. The other ask is for Communications and Special Events Assistant. And this is the proposal, we now organize and orchestrate 12 major city special events that are on the books each and every year, this is before the surprises that inevitably pop up throughout the course of a fiscal year. This is Event Engagement and Management Skills. The special event demands are not just exclusive to the summer months, because now we're having events that we're dealing with in the late winter, early spring, and late summer, early fall, which require additional attention and staffing. The additional special events that I'm speaking of now include City Beautiful Awards, the Long Service Recognition Dinner, the mayor's end-of-term reception, the children's Christmas party that we were hoping to inherit last year, but we're dealing with the unions, and hopefully we'll get that panned out and make it happen this year. The Sister City Christmas Gathering, unscheduled miscellaneous events, the Cowans Field Opening Community Recognition Program, and so on. It requires an awful lot of effort and time, so we're hoping that we can bring another body into the department. This position would focus on keeping forums and information up to date and accurate, event website management, for example, Cowalpilus, which has an independent website. Constant and timely communication with sponsors, clients, special event stakeholders, very important, we have to stay on top of them. Candidate would also be required to possess significant computer graphic skills to complement website management and design, the ability to do more graphic work in-house, and this is a skill that the individual that we're kind of keying on at this particular moment has worked with other departments as well. So we would certainly spread that skill set, and it would be available. For example, I believe Spencer designed some imagery for the Transit Department last year for their programs. Design skills would also be utilized for What's on Woodstock, and that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Questions of council? Counselor Shapin?
Thank you, your worship, through to Brad Jansen. First of all, thanks for all of your slides. Mr. Slager did- It took on a life of its own. More of some comments, but I know this year, and you didn't touch on it as much as I was hoping, but I think that just plays to your character more than anything, is the amount of events that council or when things just happen to pop up, that yourself and Ann and Jason and Lisa, of course, just magically make good, look good, and make us look good and the city look good. So thank you for those that maybe aren't a major event, but that you continue to shine. And I want to touch a little bit on Jason Dunham as well. Jason's just done a phenomenal job, and the increase in our social media pieces, how we look when we come across on the website, just from my perspective, is so much better than it's ever been, and it kind of eliminates councils from making some mistakes on social media, if I can say it so boldly. But other than that, as always, Brad, I want to thank you for being the voice of Woodstock.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Your team does a great job, and to go back to the numbers and the budget and why we're here, when someone proposes 103,000 in revenue and it shows up as 182,000, you're doing something right. So congratulations to you and your team, and I thank you for your presentation this evening.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Further questions of council? Seeing none, thank you. And next up, we have Ryan Connors with Parks and Recreation, followed by Arenas and Aquatics, and we'll start at page 49.
Okay. That's me, good. Okay. Your worship, council, thank you for having me here and giving me the opportunity to present the highlights of 2017 and present to the 2018 Parks and Recreation budget requests. The 2017 highlights for Parks and Recreation, Cowan Fields had a successful first season of operation. We had 1,600, or over 1,600 hours of booked time on the fields out in Cowan. We also had large use of the splash pad and paved trail. Burgess Park Trail System added 2.2 kilometers of new trail, and 1,700 new trees were planted. Four acres of natural tall grass prairies were also planted. Southside East Ball Diamond was renovated and improved, we changed the ball diamond from a slow pitch adult diamond to a hard ball for youth. Edgewood Park Play Structure was redeveloped, Van Ave Splash Pad was redeveloped, Shannon Larson's Park Phase Two was completed, the Shade Shelter. The Park on Halifax, now called Ludwig Park, Phase One was completed, which was the grading and the play structure. The community complex refrigeration retrofit was completed. Southside Pool Air Handling System was replaced. And for the third year in a row, no one has paid for public skating in Woodstock, and this has been from community sponsorship. Moving on to the parks metrics, the, and this should say 2017, I've got 2016 up there. We've had 53 parks and parquettes, and we have four trails with now 14.5 kilometers, eight woodlots, 12 storey management ponds, and also six traffic islands and four acres of overpass corridors that are maintained. Moving on now to sports fields, when you do a major sports field build, the concern is that you just upgrade sports fields and not increase access for the community. This is clearly not the case with Cowan Fields. Ball Diamond rentals have increased 73% year-over-year. Ball Diamond rental revenues are now at over $43,000. There are two reasons for the sports field booking increase. One is that the adult leagues have now gotten bigger, there's more of them, and they're taking up more time. The other is minor ball has moved into a lot of the underused fields, so that's done that. Soccer field- Soccer field rentals, we have, we've had 352 hours on city soccer pitches, and the soccer field rental revenue was $1,260, this coming almost exclusively from youth. Some recreational metrics. The community complex had foot traffic over a half a million again. It was down 3,700 from last year. However, taking into account that the complex didn't have ice in it for three months, and now we don't have a fitness club, the other areas actually grew quite significantly. And this would be the sports team usage, camps, and the ongoing strength of the public skating. Southside Pool Lessons were up 26.6%. Rentals were up 25.2%, and public swims were up 41% year-over-year. Lions Pool was down 12.5% year-over-year. However, Lions Pool last year was the only game in town because the indoor pool was closed. So, this was a very good year for Lions as well, bringing in $24,000 in revenue. Another item that I'd like to bring up here is online registration. For the community, this is not just Parks and Rec, but this would be all online registration, is very strong at 55%, with all other registered programs being 45%. So, that would be phone and in-person. So, most people, when they register for a city program, they're doing it online. Recreation and Parks Programming, summer programming registration grew to 603, up by 105 from last year, with registration revenues increasing by over $16,000. Additionally, offering diversity in recreation and leisure programs has been a priority for the department. And last year, we offered 16 new programs to the community, to the youth, teens, and adults in 2017. And we do have, I believe there's another 13 coming at the first part of 2018. The Fee Assistance in Recreation Program has changed. Council has now, it was solely our Recreation Department that had a fee assistance, but now the Culture Department also has the same program. It has seen growth in its use every year that it's been instituted. Unfortunately, we see that this program has maxed out in June. So, by June in 2017, we were, we were full, and people were on waitlists. 2017 was also a banner year in Parks and Recreation for sponsorship, advertising, donations, and grants. Just to name a few, some of the sponsorships, Cowan Field Title Sponsorship and Ball Diamond. We had swim sponsored, all our skates sponsored, as I mentioned before, benches, trees, and AEDs. Advertising in the rec guide and on rink boards. The rink boards and the ice was still very strong. Donations came from Cowan Insurance to help the minor ball field at Southside East. And grants came from Summer Employment Enabling Accessibility, Ontario Rec and Sports Community Fund, and Ontario Sport and Rec Grants. So, all very strong. Now, a little getting budget to actuals for 2017, just to go over that. If you look at the rec and parks lines, basically, we're very close. We're at about 5,000 over budget, and we really, we fell short with about 6,000 under in advertising for the rec guide. Parks, we were under budget in 2017, or we were projecting that. Parks had to institute some cost-saving measures as Cowan Park Hydro and Water were higher than anticipated. So, our park supervisor had to make sure that he didn't go over budget, which he certainly managed to do. Parks and Rec Programs and Grants, we didn't hit the revenue targets that we were hoping to, but when the community starts to offer a lot of recreation programs, some are hits right away, while others take time to build. And we are seeing that more of the programs that are hitting, we're keeping, and the ones that aren't so good, we'll just either let them try to mature, or we'll make a decision to fold them in and try something else. Moving on from that, the Civic Center, ICE revenues were down. However, there are still some revenues that are outstanding, and in the budget, there is some full-time wages that need to be moved from the community complex that have not been moved yet. Camps, from a budget standpoint, this has been the best year for camps. We hit our revenue targets. Now, summer, and the summer student program helped us meet the very aggressive targets, but even without that, we were still by far, this was our best year budget-wise in revenues for camps. Southside Aquatics, they are a little over budget in 2017, and the rationale for that was we had two full-time staff that had to take two months off each, and we had to fill that with part-time staff in order to keep operating. You can't open the pool without the correct number of lifeguards on the deck. The other item was, we had an emergency repair of the pool's heater that needed to be fixed. Lions Pool was fairly on target with budget, a little bit down in revenues, but not too much. In the community complex, there's about $13,000 still in revenue to be realized in the 2017 budget, and about that much is possible to be coming out with hydro. Other than that, there was few surprises with the budget for the complex, with the exception of a section of fire suppression line that had to be replaced. So, that's the 2017 budget. Overall, the 2017 budget will be in the black by about 1.8%. So, we just, we just hit the target. 2018, the base budget. So, 2018 items that will affect the base budget I have up here, hydro costs increased for Cowan Fields pools and arenas. The hydro keeps going up, and sportfield lightings and pool lightings and arena lightings are energy hogs. They take a lot of energy, and that will continue to go up. The other items that will have an effect on programs, camps, and Southside Wading Pool is the increase to minimum wage, so Bill 148, and parking lot snow removal continues to go up. One final note, which isn't a budgetary item, but a significant change, is the Rec and Leisure Guide in 2018 will not be going out. It usually goes out as an insert with What's on Woodstock, but that won't be happening anymore. What's on Woodstock is moving to going out with Postal Service, which Mr. Jansen had just alluded to in his presentation. But if we included the Rec and Leisure Guide, which goes out two times a year, it changes the costs so significantly that it's, it's not really worth it. It becomes a book as far as the costing goes. So, what we're planning to do is we're, we've added more Rec and Leisure Guides, and they're going to be at, on display at all of our buildings, and we're also going to be promoting it heavily online, which, from what we understand, we were kind of in that situation last year anyways, without us knowing. So, we'll be doing that. So, this is what the operating budget for 2018, sorry, yeah, 2018 looks like again. I have 17. The Parks and Recreation 2018 Base Budget Request is an increase of 2,880 from 2017, and this represents a 6.3% increase. You can see the areas that have the largest increase, which is the rec program and grants, the Southside Aquatics, and rec camps. All of those are the effect of the minimum wage increase. The other increases, most of them have to do with hydro and heat, and then it would just be the base increase from there. There is one addition to base budget requests coming out of Parks and Recreation, and this is to increase a summer student staff complement by one student camp staff. So, this would be a four-month student position who would help the supervisor of recreation programs, sponsorships, and grants. For the first two months, this person would help planning and training the summer camp staff. This will free up the full-time staff to do part of this work as well, but also focus on the sponsorship and grants items during those months as well. Without a student, this camps takes up about four months of the job. The other two months, the supervisor will do coverage for the camps as far as supervision, as well as the full-time staff, and will also be there for the camp so that they can provide further assistance to the high-need campers that do come to the camps, and this is something that was identified as a need by participants. And with that, that's the presentation.
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Chapin?
Thank you, worship. I actually have a few questions, so if we can go from the shock, I know. Through, your worship, to Mr. Connors, first of all, I appreciate the numbers, but I know over the last year, you rolled out the online registration for programs and things like that. Initially, the increase in dollars was quite significant. Has that continued on now that we're rolling out so many other programs?
Your worship, through to the counselor's question. Yeah, the initial outlay is, that will be an ongoing fee. Like, there was an initial outlay, which was a capital outlay, so that was a one-time. And then, the remainder of the outlay will be an annual fee for the service of having the online ability. So, it's, the online system is basically, we pay a subscription fee to it.
And I appreciate that. I guess what I'm getting at is, are we seeing the return in revenue by making it easier for people to pay online? Are we seeing new people using it, especially because we're rolling out so many new programs now, and the cost to roll out those programs? Are we seeing a, somewhat of a return from that?
This would be more anecdotal. I don't have direct facts for this, but we are seeing increases in all our programs, and we are seeing fewer lines. Before the registration lines, or sorry, before the online piece, we did have lineups that would, when swimming lessons opened, they'd be lined up for an hour or so. Every time you put a hurdle in someone's path or make it difficult to register, you'll have some people that will go through that, but there will also be others that will just be fed up and not do it. So, I believe by offering online registration, it makes it easier for people to sign up, easier to engage, and easier to get involved. So, I think it is certainly worth it, and we were one of the last municipalities to get on the online registration, but I believe that it's something that the community really wants.
And just one final question. Last year, we approved bringing on a grants coordinator. Obviously, Emma does a great job, and I'm just wondering, sort of the benefits that we're seeing there, are we seeing the same amount of grants still being available? Are we catching more grants that are available? Because I know that in the past, obviously, you're busy, and sometimes it would be, there was a grant, but it was a month or two ago. So, I'm just wondering if the benefits are there for that.
Your worship, through to the counselor's question. Yes, we are seeing a lot of benefit from that, strictly from the grant side of things. Given the other supervisors' workload, there's no way we'd be able to apply for all those grants, and a lot of the grants are very time-consuming and time-sensitive. So, as the City of Woodstock, we were able to apply for a lot more grants. We were successful in more grants than we've ever been, and I believe that's a direct result of this position.
Great. Thank you. And as always, thanks to you and your staff, and to Patrick and Chris and Emma, and all the rest of you who do a great job. So, thank you. Appreciate all the work you do.
Counselor Agioni?
Thank you, your worship. Through to Mr. Connors, more of a question. I apologize. I couldn't see the screen that well on the fee assistance. You said we ran out by June?
Your worship, through to the counselor's question. We hit our capacity by June. Now, your question, if I might anticipate it.
Yep.
When you look at the screen, it shows that we do still have a small amount that is unused. And what, what that is, is when you apply for a fee assistance program, you get a certain amount of money, depending on how many children you have in your family, into your account. So, this is a credit in your account, and you can use it for any program, anything you like. So, there's, we don't have a barrier where it's like we hold the money for people. It's theirs, they can use it. If they don't use it all, at the end of the year, it comes back. So, what we do do is, as we're getting closer to the end of the year, we actually make calls and say, are you going to use the remainder of your account? Because there's other people on the waitlist that would like to use it, and we try to spread it out. And this year, we were actually a lot more successful than other years, getting to use as close to the 15 as possible, but there is, there is some there. So, but it is an oversubscribed program.
If I may continue, your worship. Thank you. Do you see a bigger need for the assistance? I get a lot, the reason I'm asking is, I do get a lot of messages, and to hear that we've already maxed them out, because I didn't realize we maxed them out. So, that's my own ignorance. I've always told people to make sure they contact and everything else, because I knew this program's there. Is there a bigger need, in your opinion, of more money to help more families?
Your worship, through to the counselor's question. I believe it does show a larger need. We do, if we don't, if we're not able to capture the people with the kind of the second calling of this, we do have them on a waitlist, but they're kind of at the front of the waitlist for the following year. But, yes, since it was in June, it seems like it's significant. We are looking out to see if we can have sponsorship, maybe a ball tournament or something like that from the community to help with this fund. Council is quite generous in providing the 15,000 for- Council is quite generous in providing the 15,000 for this program, and it would be nice if we could get some sponsorship to help boost that up before we come back to council and say, you know, it would be good to have more. So I'm hoping we get some more through sponsorship.
Well, that's great, because that's, I was going to ask about, could families actually offer assistance? Is there something established already where people can give to a fund that, to help this exact reason?
Your worship, through to the counselor's question, we are working on a donate fund for this piece. It's not ready yet, but that is certainly something that will be coming in the future.
Thank you. Great job.
Counselor Lauter?
Thank you, and through the mayor too, Brian, thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of questions on page 52 and the Parks Water. It was budgeted for 26,000, and it was 49,314 spent, and you're still asking for just 26,000. Was there something that caused that to go higher, and you don't think that will be this year?
Your worship, through to the counselor's question, the, there's $13,900 that's going to come out of that account and go into the Cowan Fields water account. It hasn't been moved yet, and that's where it will go, because you'll see that the Cowan Fields account has zero in it right now, so.
Okay.
And because of the splash pad, we certainly didn't have zero.
No, and I did see that, and I wondered. Okay, and just the other one was the complex ground maintenance part-time. There was 33,110 budgeted and only 68850 spent, and we're back in for 33,110.
Okay, sorry.
That is on page 54, complex ground maintenance part-time. It's 0701-83540103.
Your worship, through to the counselor's question, there are a few of the part-time lines that still need to be adjusted. The part-time students don't always put in the right items. You'll notice that the floral part-time is very much over, and I think a lot of the students use that account instead of the accounts that they were supposed to use, that they were actually using, so it does need to be adjusted after the fact.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Pedder?
Through the mayor to Brian. Brian, you mentioned Bill 148 a couple of times during your presentation, and I'm going to assume that your department probably got hit by that bill harder than any other department. Can you give me an example, I don't want to put you on the spot, but of the biggest changes, some of the jobs that, and what kind of percentage that we looked at from what we were paying to what we're going to be paying?
Your worship, through to the counselor's question, the jobs that were affected are the camp counselor jobs, the waiting pool attendant at the waiting pool at Southside, and some of the recreational program staff would be there. Now, that would vary anywhere from jobs that were 11 or 12 dollars to now be 14, so. And that's per hour, so, yeah, we, I believe we are certainly the hardest-hit department by this change.
Further questions of council? Seeing none, thank you very much. And next up, we have Administrative Services with Patrice Hilderle, and we'll go back to page one. Oh. We have Ms. Campbell tonight.
I drew the short straw. Good evening, your worship and members of council. I'm going to cover the Treasury Department as well as the Administrative Services Department and the IT Department tonight. So this slide breaks out the revenues for the year. Basically, very consistent with last year, about 75% of our revenue source is from taxation. And generally, the other contributions remain pretty consistent from one year to the next. Each year, we receive over a million dollars, actually, one and a half million in 2017, from the slot machine facility. And we have a council policy in place that requires us to allocate the previous year funding into the next year budget so that we know the dollars that we're working with, and it's consistent from one year to the next. And we do it, the 350,000 to the hospital, 15% to the community grants, and then 30% is brought into the revenue fund budget to offset taxation, and the balance goes into our capital program. Other revenues in the Treasury area that are of note are the payments in lieu of taxation, which are properties that are not subject to a typical assessment-based taxation, but pay a little bit towards our budget, such as Fanchak College or the hospital. We've also got penalty charges on taxes and investment income. And what does vary from one year to another is financing that comes in from the reserves and the reserve funds. And typically, those, when those revenues are brought in, they're often matched to an expenditure, not always, but it could be a special project, and we're trying to keep the tax rate somewhat flat. We did increase the additional taxes this year by $200,000. We have been, I think the last three out of four years, we've had approximately one and a half million dollars generated. MPAC is now committed to providing supplementary assessment roles more frequently than in the past, so we're hoping that the additional tax number will be kept more up to date, and we're trying to make it reflective of the development in the community. We did remove this year the $400,000 transfer in from the hydro legacy fund, which was basically investment income generated from the fund. We're going to let it sit for a year, anticipating that the fund will grow, and then we're going to reevaluate the, sort of the process moving forward on how we're going to deal with that income. And as has been the trend, the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund has decreased again this year, and I suspect eventually will go away. In terms of expenditures, our boundary adjustment payments are increasing. We've added the recent annexation from Norwich, and that is a perpetual payment, as are the other adjustments to Blanford, Blenheim, Etor, Tavistock, so that is an ongoing expenditure. The tax rebates for charities and similar organization, that's remaining pretty consistent from one year to the next. It is a process whereby a charity can apply for a bit of a refund from the city to reduce their commercial taxes to a residential rate. The community improvement program payments, they fluctuate from one year to the next, but they are offset by a contribution to the development from the downtown redevelopment reserve fund. And the tax adjustments this year, we have upped that number as well. We've got a significant number of large outstanding appeals, and we're anticipating that the number will be quite high in 2018. The reserve contributions and reserve fund contributions are pretty consistent from the previous year, not much change. And our 2016 surplus allocation, the bulk of it went into the reserve for capital projects in 2017. Once we have a 2017 surplus number, we'll be bringing that forward with some suggestions of where that money will go. The year-end list of reserves and reserve funds is not quite ready, but will be available shortly so that council will have an opportunity to see what funds are available to us. In terms of the Administrative Services Department, this is sort of a typical overview of what we do. We send out an awful lot of tax bills in a year, twice a year. We do the payroll for everybody. Almost 10,000 payments through our accounts payable system, of which up to almost 80% now is going through EFT, getting away from check payments. Did a considerable number of accounts receivable invoicing, which will hopefully be on the decline when the Legend system gets up and running for invoicing purposes. And we maintain the capital asset database of almost $170 million. That's the net book value after amortization. In terms of achievements in our department, we've continued to develop and began the rollout on the electronic time card system. It's an ongoing process. We hope to get that mostly, I think, finished in 2018. We've automated some of our invoicing. We've assisted with the implementation of the electronic transit fare system this year. And as well, we've continued to assist with the implementation of Legend. It's been rolled out to the museum and the art gallery in 2017. Our budget asked last year was for caseware, which is a financial reporting package, and the implementation on that is in progress, and hopefully, we'll be able to use it for the 2017 financials. In terms of our goals for the coming year, we're hoping, as I said, to get through the electronic time card system and possibly automate the pay stub process. We're continuing to look into online payment options. We're investigating right now payment of parking tickets online. We finally have the legislative authority to send our tax bills out by email, so we will be implementing that, hopefully, for the July billing. Also hope to roll out electronic cash receiving, mainly to our engineering department, who'd still vary manual process there. And our Asset Management Working Committee is continuing to develop a framework for managing our assets in order that we're in compliance with the new Asset Management Planning Regulation, which is fairly comprehensive. In terms of debt, our outstanding principal at the end of 2017 is just over $11 million. We are projecting an additional $6.7 million to be issued in 2018. Breakdown of that additional venture information is outlined there. Biggest one, of course, being the addition to the police station, almost 4.4 million. If everything is issued as planned in 2018, by the end of the year, we'll be up to almost 18 million in debt. And as you, well, I don't know if you can see it on that slide, it's pretty small, but the bulk of the outstanding debt relates to roads, various recreational facilities, and the police station. In terms of the grants, we bring in, we bring in the majority of the money to fund the grants from the slot machine reserve fund, with the exception of a special one-time, a special grant that we provide to Southgate Centre through the levy. Of that grant allocation this year, of the 225,000, 15,000 will go to the fare program that Brian was discussing. The other building budget is basically a consolidation of buildings within the city that aren't necessarily used in the provision of a city service, but we're just trying to keep them all in one place so we can see what's going on with them. The Woodstock Hydro Building, we do contribute the net rent to the reserve for municipal buildings. Our only ask this year in the budget is an increase to the contribution for the computer replacement reserve. We've had it at about $100,000 for, I don't know, at least 15 years, I think, and we're just finding that the expenditures on the computer replacement is exceeding and has been exceeding for the past number of years, that amount. So we're looking to up the amount by $50,000 to 150,000 in order that we can have enough funds in the reserve to continue to finance the capital requirements for IT. And that's it. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Talbot?
Excuse me, thank you, your worship, through to Diane. When you're talking about the electronic pay stub, what's holding us back from that? Because I know at the county, it's, they've been electronic for quite some time.
Your worship, through to the counselor, just, we just bought the software, actually, to be able to do it, and it's just a matter of, I think we want to sort of get the electronic time card process in place before we add another element on top of that.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none. Next, we'll turn to Mayor and council, so pages 96 to 98. And... Questions of council?
So you'll see a few changes with the reserve for the trade mission that happens biannually. Council will recall, in 2017, we had the trade mission, so there was an additional amount. So you'll see a decrease in revenue there. Most of the expense lines for individual counselors are status quo. So when you look at the bottom line, after we look at the awards of excellence and the sister cities and the civic reception and everything else, we're looking at a $90 increase from the previous year. No questions. Next up, we'll move on to the Chief Administrative Officer, David Creary, and he'll touch on his office as well as planning and several other miscellaneous. So we'll start at page 89.
Thank you, your worship. I'm the last on the agenda tonight, and I plan to bounce across to a number of topics. So with your worship's permission, I welcome questions as we go, because we'll be switching up topics as we proceed through the presentation, or of course, you can hold them to the end, it's your choice. Actually, we'll start first on page 48, the planning page. The planning budget is relatively small. It's showing a $4,000 reduction. This is essentially a residual of the planning costs that the city bears from the county planning department. The planning revenue represents the revenue that we receive for zone change applications, which are actually a city jurisdiction planning application. And the costs predominantly relate to the county delivery of planning services to the city. The exception would be the application fees. That relates to situations when the city needs to file a planning application that would not be under our jurisdiction. You're seeing a little increase there this year, because we anticipate filing a plan of subdivision application for the Petullo Avenue Plan of Subdivision. And the other is the planning consultant services. This would be the budget, should council need to retain a professional planner to defend a decision of council at the Ontario Municipal Board. Showing a reduction of that this year, anticipating and hoping that we're not exposed to an Ontario Municipal Board appeal. So if there's any questions on planning, I'll take, prefer to take those now, because we're going to bounce towards the end of the budget next, page 89.
Questions of council on that section? Seeing none, we'll go to 89.
89, thank you, your worship. The CAO budget page, showing a reduction of $2,650 year-over-year. The only thing really of note here is the legal fees. Council approved a motion in 2017 to reduce the legal fees from 65,000 to 25,000, which reflected the actual cost in 2017. It was an unusual year where legal fees were low. They do tend to fluctuate depending on the issues that the city faces. In 2017, much of the legal work related to real estate, and real estate legal costs are actually charged out to the transaction, so they don't reside in the legal services budget. So council approved the establishment of a legal services reserve with the $40,000 that was removed from that budget. You can see in 2017, we've spent a little over the 25, we're $32,800. I just held it at the $25,000 budget that council set in 2017 for the moment. And that's really the only thing of note in this budget.
Counselor Lauter?
Thank you, through the mayor too, the CAO. On the legal fees, should you need any extra other than the 25, you can always go to the 40,000 that's in capital. There hasn't been anything spent out of capital this year, or last year, I should say, for that.
Your worship, through to Counselor Lauter, that is always a possibility, yes. There has nothing been spent of that $40,000. But of course, to access the reserve, we do have to come to council for your approval.
Further questions of council? Thank you.
Okay, so there's just a few remaining additions to base budget that haven't been picked up as council's heard the various presentations from your department heads. picked up as councils heard the various presentations from your department heads. The first, I believe we did hear from Mr. Dehaan about the Southside Pond Cleanout Sediment For Bay, the suggested $500,000 contribution to a new reserve to build the fund for the work that's ultimately required in the short term on that project. So we'll move on then to the post-secondary capital grant. We're suggesting $250,000 contribution to what would be a new reserve. And this really comes out of the strategic plan identifying additional post-secondary opportunities as a priority item for the city. Fanshawe established in its current location in 1988, and since that time, they've grown to 10 full-time programs. They're now at 400 full-time students. They have another 350 part-time students. By far, it is the most overpopulated per square foot school that they have in their catchment area. They are spilling into portable classrooms behind the college, they're spilling into city facilities, they're into high schools, and they're looking for more space. They proposed an expansion in 2010, but it didn't proceed as it didn't obtain the federal funding. At that time, city council did approve a grant of land for an expansion, as well as a grant of $1 million, subject to the project proceeding. The project didn't proceed, so the grant was not realized. Municipal contributions towards capital campaigns for post-secondary expansions or new facilities are very common in this day and age. There is no question, there's a need for increased physical space for post-secondary education. And any educational institution, whether it's Fanshawe or some other, will seek financial support from various sources, be it the city, the county, the alumni, to establish or expand in the city. And so establishing a reserve is simply anticipating this request. The capital levy, we're showing this as a per $100,000. And this relates to a capital budget forecast primarily focused to the municipal building section of the capital budget. That continues to include many large cost projects, including projects that would fit into a category of what we would call maintenance or state of good repair. An example is the re-roofing of the community complex. It's estimated at $1.2 million. It's in your five-year forecast. We will simply not be able to proceed with that project without the use of debt. Our annual contributions to the municipal building reserve is 450,000. We're in a period right now where additional 250,000 rent from the hydro building is coming into that reserve. That will be for one, maybe two more years, and that is it. So there simply isn't the financing capacity to fund these projects without debt. Other large cost projects in the building area that are in your forecast is the Civic Centre Arena, Rink Four replacement, the boards replacement estimated at $800,000. And council heard at their last meeting, the cost of $900,000 to rehabilitate Lions Pool. So there's lots of projects, big-ticket items. So debt is an effective source of financing, and many projects simply could not proceed without the use of debt. Council just heard from the administrative services presentation, the current position that the city has with debt. And so this is simply a question for council. Do you wish to continue to use debt to fund these large projects? Or do you want to mitigate that by raising some additional funds through the levy? The final is the downtown redevelopment reserve fund. This is, council contributes $120,000 a year to this downtown redevelopment reserve fund. It has been used, it's been in existence for many years, it's been used to fund a number of downtown projects. And most recently, it is the primary source of funding for the community improvement programs, which provides grants and loans to repairs of privately owned buildings in the downtown. Last year, we brought to council concerns for the financial sustainability of the community improvement programs, primarily due to the tax grant-back program. The issue with the tax grant-back program is that it is, it runs for five years, unlike the other programs, the grants and the loans. And it's very difficult to estimate the cost of the tax grant-back because it relies on the assessment from MPAC to calculate the actual cost of the grant-back. We never get the assessment from MPAC until the project's completed. So the grant-back is approved well ahead of our ability to price out the cost of this grant-back. Certainly can guess, but that's all that we can do. We were concerned with the financial sustainability because there were a number of projects that have been approved in the downtown, and Indwell is a prime example. It was exposed to a potential assessment by MPAC, and that was driving a large part of our concern for the sustainability of these programs. We have since received the ruling from MPAC that Indwell is in fact exempt. So for the moment, staff are satisfied that the community improvement programs can continue, that the financial sustainability for the continuation is okay. If there is a large-scale downtown redevelopment, though, I would expect that we'll be back to you with concerns for financial sustainability of the program. So, but what we're here tonight to talk about is adding $80,000 a year to the contribution, so to take the 120,000 to 200,000 a year. And we're suggesting that council heard at the last meeting and has before it, as a request to the addition to base budget, a downtown development plan. Out of that downtown development plan will come a list of actionable recommendations to help revitalize the downtown. Those will cost money. One of the examples is simply the museum square redevelopment, that council received a concept plan at the last meeting of. So we're suggesting that there will be further investment needed in the downtown. There's a certainty in that regard, and that it would be prudent to begin adding more dollars to this reserve fund to be able to put those recommendations into action. The last addition to base budget is a request that we received from the BIA for $5,000. And this relates to the setting up and the taking down of the Christmas decorations that are mounted on the municipal streetlights downtown. So this is the contractor cost, who has been tabers as of late, to set up and take down these decorations. The BIA has not requested the assistance for the storage, the repair, or the capital replacement of these Christmas decorations at this point. And the city has assumed the cost of much of the winter lights program, and the 2018 budget request for winter lights is $32,000. So we're doing a lot of this already. The current decorations were purchased in 2012, and the cost was about $20,000. The BIA approached council back in 2012 and requested funding $13,000 of the $20,000 cost. They funded $7,000 of it, and council approved that. So council has, in the past, provided financial support to the BIA for this program. So if council wishes to extend the BIA request to include the storage, the repair of these Christmas decorations, we would suggest the annual budget of approximately $12,000. So the $5,000 would become $12,000. And looking at the Christmas decorations, we think that there's probably about $5,000 worth of repairs that are required to these. That may not be an annual requirement, but that's what we're thinking is required for the coming year. And then approximately $2,000 for the cost of renting the storage facility. So the BIA at this point is only asked for $5,000, with them covering the balance at So the additions to base budget, the financing, we're suggesting the financing of any additions to base budget that council used the primary source would be the levy. There is some financing suggested using user fees and event sponsorship. And there are two that we're suggesting, the tax stabilization reserve, the heritage registry, which council heard earlier this evening, as well as the downtown development plaster plan. We're suggesting the tax stabilization reserve fund, but there is the potential that the recently announced Main Street Fund could apply to this study. The particulars of this funding are not yet known. It is being administered through AMO, and we're waiting for those details. We've included a few options to mitigate the levy increase for council to consider. And the first is the hydro legacy fund. The current fund position as of January 31st is approximately $29.6 million. Last year, council took $400,000 of investment income and applied it to the revenue fund budget, and $400,000 applied to the capital budget for a total of $800,000 withdrawn. So in total, the two-year return on the fund would be just slightly over $1.2 million. We have not included anything in the 2018 budget for revenue, investment revenue for either the capital budget or the revenue fund budget at this time. And the reason for that is the legacy fund investment policy stipulates the priorities being adhering to the statutory requirements, the preservation of capital, maintaining liquidity, and earning a competitive rate of return. And finally, that the legacy fund retention reserve be established, and that would be two times the projected annual transfers. We have not started that yet. We are seeing a, we're seeing the ups and downs of investment cycles this year, and unfortunately, we're on the downside with the interest rate environment that is on the increase. And so it's more evident than ever that a legacy fund retention reserve is important for us to establish. And we're suggesting to take a pause on drawing investment income this year. But council could certainly direct that some portion of the proceeds be directed towards the revenue fund budget. The advisory committee consisting of his worship and councillors Lottar and Petter have sat in on investment meetings, and we're discussing investment mixes. And that will be something that will be continuing through 2018. The next option would be the use of dedicated gas tax funding. There was a $50,000 increase in this in 2018 to $454,000. Dedicated gas tax funding has not historically been used for operating budget purposes. Maybe the exception is one year, we did use it. It has historically been used for capital budget and used to fund bus replacements. Dedicated gas tax funding is provincial, and it's required to be spent exclusively on public transit. It cannot go to anything else. And it has been now made permanent by the Dedicated Funding for Transportation Act. And there's a typo there, it's actually 2013 that act came into place. So the province has provided some certainty to municipalities that this money will be available going forward. The funding is currently at the two cents per liter level, and the amount that is paid each year is a formula that comprises components of population as well as transit ridership. The province has committed over, I think it's four increments, to increase the annual funding from two cents a liter to four cents a liter by 2021 and 2022. Remains to be seen whether that actually happens. That hasn't been put into law, but that is their official commitment. So that means that the annual amount received should be going up in the future. So what we're suggesting is that council could consider applying a certain amount of this annually to the operating costs of the conventional transit system, as well as the paratransit system. We've looked at our funding flows over the next five years and are comfortable that $150,000 a year going forward is sustainable. And that is at the two cents per liter funding level. If it goes up to four cents per liter, then certainly that should be revisited because it should be able to go up. We're also in a period where we have spent a number of years of capital investment in our transit fleet. And so our capital needs in transit are not as significant as they have been historically. And finally, there is another source of funding that has entered the picture, and that is PTIF funding. And that is federal, and that is capital only. And the city has made use of PTIF funding for the electronic fare system, as well as the purchase of two new buses. So we are using that funding for capital, and that has helped as well. So we do suggest that this is something that council could consider. And finally, this is a very small item, consultant services in the planning services section, which spoke about earlier. We've reduced it to $5,000, but council could certainly reduce that to zero. Anytime we come to council with a matter that is being appealed to the Ontario Municipal Board, we're always before you with a report to affirm your decision. And so there's always an opportunity to ask you to access funds from a reserve for the defense of your position. And now that we have a legal services reserve, there's an opportunity to tap into that, and perhaps we can do away with an annual budget. And so that would mean deleting $5,000 from this line item, and we would come to you on an as-needed basis. So just quickly to go through what we haven't included, we're still working on the weekly recycling collection. We're awaiting results of the RFP for private contracted services in this regard. Weekly recycling collection is something that is not covered under the county waste management agreement, and so this will reside with the city costs, so on the levy. Physician recruitment, you heard from the economic development office suggesting $50,000 would be something that could kickstart hiring a physician recruiter. We have not included anything for the municipal energy plan. Again, the province with the cap and trade funds is content on launching their own programs through Green On Ontario, and there has been very little in the way of program offerings for assistance for municipalities to implement their municipal energy plans, and we continue to wait. And finally, there is a recommendation that comes back, goes back to the strategic plan for the completion of a cultural master plan. And this is something that, some elements of this we see becoming part of the downtown development plan if council decides to proceed with that. We think the downtown development plan is a priority, and so that is why that is before you for 2018 as opposed to the cultural master plan. And just looking forward, as council decides where it wishes to apply the next tax dollar, casting your view forward, conservation area, the Pitta Conservation Area, we're continuing to work on a new management agreement with the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority for open public access to the portions of the North Shore, the deuse area, the South Shore, as well as water access. The 2019 annual fee for that is, at this point, looking to be about $170,000, rising to $195,000. to $195,000 in 2020, and then rising by inflation thereafter. In the 2018 budget, you're looking at a cost of $95,000. So there'll be an increase associated with that. We continue to work with Cowan Park with respect to the question of responsibility for annual debt payments and operating costs of that facility. This question remains unanswered. We have more regulation coming. Minimum maintenance standards are being changed. There's a proposal in place to require municipalities to clear all municipal sidewalks within 48 hours of the end of any snowfall. We expect this to come forward in 2018. It is imminent. It is a significant issue for us. This alone is one reason alone why additional bylaw resources are likely required. We simply can't dispatch the manpower to do the sidewalks within 48 hours of the end of a snowfall. We're finishing, we're lucky, we always finish the roads within 24 hours of the end of a snowfall, unequivocally. But to be able to turn around and complete the sidewalks within another 24 hours is a significant undertaking. So this is a significant issue. It's something that will likely require the passage of a bylaw that requires homeowners to take care of the sidewalk in front of their properties. The transient accommodation tax is a new revenue tool. It's available to council. This is also known as a hotel tax. This is a taxing power that exists now to municipalities, to lower-tier municipalities. Half of any revenue derived from a hotel tax must be shared with the local tourist agency, which in this case would be the County of Oxford. But this would certainly be a revenue tool to help finance the cost of the events as well as the recreation facilities that draw so many people to the community that use our hotels. So this is something that is available to council now. It will take some time to put in place. If council wishes to pursue something like this, it's why we're not suggesting it's a 2018 mitigation. It's something for council to consider. And finally, organizational review. The city has grown substantively, and we are, I believe, on the cusp of a need for an organizational review of our departments. This is not a review looking for efficiencies, for cost efficiencies. This is an organizational review to find new organizational structures to support the increased workload that's come from the additional staff, the additional programs that, and the additional growth that this community has experienced. This is something that we suggest is not 2018. It is likely 2019 or beyond, but we have got to the size where I believe it is now time to begin thinking about this. And there will be budget implications for such an organizational review. And that concludes, Your Worship.
Thank you. Questions of council? Councillor Lauter?
Thank you. Through the mayor, to the CEO. I just, I was wondering about that 95,000 Piddock. Are they doing the north and south now, whatever they do? Doesn't seem to be a lot. And now, if you're increasing it to, starting to 170, is that the same, or is this additional that they're going to be doing, or is it the same thing? Because, I mean, every year, we go through this hole that you could drop your car into, going into Roeth Park.
Yes, Your Worship, through to councillor Lauter. The current agreement, which is signed annually with the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority, relates only to the South Shore, so to Roeth Park. The city pays Upper Thames River Conservation Authority $95,000, which represents a portion of, a portion of that cost relates to their maintenance services, cutting the grass, maintaining the washroom facilities. And a portion of that relates to the fact that it's free unfettered access, it's public access. They're not charging for the, not charging people to use the parkland on the South Shore. The proposed new governance model would see the day-use area, the North Shore, and the South Shore, as well as water access, be all open public access. So the walkway across the top of the dam would be opened. People could walk across, use the day-use facilities. It would become essentially a public park, the same as the South Shore. Upper Thames River Conservation Authority will maintain the same way that they maintain the South Shore, so they're cutting the grass. With, there's dispute over who's responsible for capital improvements. They suggest that we are responsible for capital improvements on the South Shore, but it never, it never made any sense for, the city can't go in and do a capital improvement to the parking lot on the South Shore when we sign an agreement every year. They would not sign an agreement for longer than a one-year term. So we will not strand capital investment on their property when we only have a one-year guarantee that it will be open and available for our community to use. So the new agreement that's being brought forward, that's being worked on, is for four, five-year terms. So there's some longevity to it, and we are acknowledging that we will take responsibility for the capital maintenance of recreational amenities. Not the natural heritage amenities, not the shorelines, not the trees, but the recreational amenities, the driveways, the parking lots, the washroom facilities. I believe there's a splash pad on the North Shore. So those are the things that the city would be assuming financial responsibility for capital improvements on, so that we can address this annual issue, this annual complaint that comes forward about the condition of the driveway and the parking lot.
So who would be responsible for opening up the walkway between the north and the south? Would we have to do that as a capital improvement? Is that over the dam there?
Yes, Your Worship, through to councillor Lauter. Those are the details that I'll be working on right now with Mr. Connors and the Conservation Authority in terms of, there is some capital investment that's required to implement the new management agreement, that being one of them, the cost of work to the dam. Certainly, some of that cost is going to reside with the city. I'm not certain that all of it necessarily should. Some of it probably is dam-related, safety-related, associated with the dam. Moving the booth, the booth that currently at the entrance gate on the North Shore is an example, that has to get moved down the hill and further into the campground area, which will remain paved for use. So it will, it will just be the western piece, the day-use area, that we're trying to open up for public use.
Councillor Shapton?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to be very clear, because I'm sure there's hundreds and hundreds of people that are live-streaming this meeting at home. So I want to be clear that that piece does not apply to the South Shore for repair. I'm sure all of us get calls with regards to the South Shore that is falling into itself right now. Irregardless of the capital expenditures, we would not be replacing or fixing the South Shore because of that shoreline. Is that correct?
Your Worship, through to councillor Shapton. Any natural heritage feature? No, we are not, that's, I'm getting a nod from Mr. Connors, that's been clear, not us.
Thank you. And I just want to state that, because I know I've received quite a few calls, as I'm sure others have, regarding the South Shore specifically. The other piece I wanted to ask if I can continue on, Your Worship, is just with regards to the stance of our current reserve position. And if you have any comments that you could share with the changes that we've seen over the past years, specifically with regards to our capital improvements and where our reserves are sitting today.
Yes, Your Worship, through to councillor Shapton. Unfortunately, I can't give you an answer tonight. I hope to be able to have the numbers tomorrow morning. But you're well aware that our capital reserves were insufficient to finance the full program put forward by your staff. There was about $970,000 of capital programs that were punted to the sideline because of the inability to finance them. We will be looking at whether or not we can bring some of those back, hopefully tomorrow morning.
Further questions of council? Councillor Shapton?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just carrying on again, with regards to the hydro legacy fund, what was the original contribution that we put in there?
Your Worship, through to councillor Shapton. The principal was $29.2 million.
Further questions of council? Okay. So we have another budget meeting on next Thursday, March 1st. We will have the police, the library board, as well as the several others. So, motion to adjourn. Councillor Accione, seconded by councillor Petter. All those in favor? We are adjourned.